Five o'clock P M. A piece of call this meeting's order. Uh, we'll start with the invocation. We'll ask Councilman Ball to give us the invocation, please.
Father, in the name of Jesus, well, we thank you for this day. The day that we never seen before, God, we ask you just to touch our minds, touch our hearts. God, we ask you that everything that is done on tonight be done in order. God, we thank you for your grace and mercy and all that you've done for us on this day. And I pray that you this night.
Amen. Amen. Um, council members, you had a, thank you, Councilwoman Ball, for the invocation. Council members, you had an opportunity to review your meeting minutes. Are there any questions about the minutes as presented to you today? That we entertain a motion to approve the meetings minutes as presented. They moved a second to approve the meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Independent chair, ayes have. Most carries. Item number one, we had item number one, minutes rate, um, under unfinished business. Item number, the minutes rate currently for the city of Aliceville is point zero two three. It is the second highest in the county. Currently, the village rate, um, for Carrollton is point zero two six. And everyone else in the city of our community and county of Pickens, um, is less than those two. Um, as far as our village rates, how much is a meal? As far as what we can see, uh, on your property taxes, um, the increase or decrease of the village rate for the our city will result in a fourteen to fifteen thousand dollar increases per meal. So, um, that being said, the military does have, it does have to go through the, um, voting process for the community, um, that will residents will be affected. With that being said, I just want to mention, I know we have been looking for that information. Now I want to mention that was presented, especially J Q public. And we'll see, uh, what we need to do from there. At the end of the year, they'll send us another letter to say, do we want to increase our village rate? Um, and then at that time, we'll, we can get information to see what direction we need to go. Is there any question? Yes, sir.
We had, we talked about two different things, I recall. One of them is, uh, the middle straight. And one of them is, uh, raise tax. So which one had had a vote on the government of the tax for people?
The middle's rate has to be voted on by the people. Taxes can be voted on by the mayor and council.
We had said, we had said that, uh, uh, you what's gonna work up well. But definitely got rid of time that we always want. It's the most, uh, the government will be more helping when we get more quicker out of it doing.
Right. Uh, like I was saying, the middle's rate per meal, if we increase whatever meal would be somewhere between, what do I say, thirteen, fourteen to fifteen, or fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars per meal? So if you multiply twenty meals, you want to go up twenty meals, you multiply that time fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, and that's how much it would be, uh, theoretically. Now, of course, that's gonna change based on property values and, uh, the economy and how things are rated. It's a lot of technicality, but I wanted to give up a bubble picture, so that way the people will kind of know, uh, what in general. So, um, so the first step would be, we let, Michelle Kirk and the property tax office know that this is what we want to do. And then they would have to do a referendum. They don't have to be voted on. And then people would decide yes or no. So there's not no tomorrow process, that would be a lengthy process. As far as, uh, and that's, that's the answer question.
When you said, the vote is on, uh, what was the question I have? If, guys, during the election that coming up, or just regular election call or just?
So ideally, we want to do it during a special election. I mean, ideally, we want to do it during a regular election because election costs. And we the ones that go out and pay for it, so we might pay for poll watching, we might pay for pollers, we might pay for machines. You're gonna have to pay for the paper, you have to pay for the train class, so we got to pay for all that. So ideally, we were sticking on something that's already coming up. We don't have any elections coming up in the fall, I don't believe. As far as any state elections, um, in the state of Alabama, our election cycle will be on next week. Or not this week, next year. So even if we did it, the earliest that, you know, I, I mean, I'll, I'll, I need to, how much was the election, especially this?
Probably, I would say from six to ten thousand dollars.
So that's whether it passed or not, six to ten thousand dollars. Uh, and like I said, if this, you know, I, I think, uh, that says a lot, like I said, then if you, if it did pass, you would, it would go through a process and be affirmed by the property office and all that type of stuff. That's beyond what I know. But I know the people, after it gets, uh, we make the recommendation, or I make the suggestion, then it will have to be voted on. Uh, sales taxes is, it goes with the, um, it goes with the mayor and council. So that will be, that can be voted on by them. Our current sales tax is the cheapest in the county. As far as what we receive, uh, for our, uh, from our sales taxes. The city, uh, except for Carrollton. Carrollton, um, I think they're a cent and a half or half a cent. But everybody else is at two cents that's coming to their city. Uh, meaning that two cents off every dollar that you spend in Gordo or Reform or Pickensville. Two cents of that comes back to their city hall. In the city of Aliceville, we only get one cent that comes back from our city hall. So, um, that's, that's that, I mean, that's, that's clear as we believe. And if we want to, as we talked about, do some things that we like, make some choices, uh, do we want to match and be around where everybody else is for our tax rate? So that way we able to continue to provide, uh, resources and new opportunities and, uh, state of art things for our city. That's what it's worth. Yes, sir. Another question? All right, that does not require any actions, because we not voting on anything. Just want to make sure we put that out there. Uh, item number one on new business. Uh, we have franchise agreement. We have a franchise agreement between the city of Aliceville and Bright Speed Communications. The city of Aliceville and Bright Speed Communications. Currently, we have one, um, city of Alice, we have one, uh, provider currently on the contract that's Northland. Um, centrally, used to be the old, um, internet provider, um, and now they have been bought out by Bright Speed. But each company that comes to our city has required, uh, to have a communications agreement or a franchise agreement that describes what they can and what they can't do as far as, uh, as far as communication goes in our, um, city. Uh, some of the things that the franchise agreement addresses, uh, we do get a, a percentage off of whatever they sell. Uh, that's written inside of there. We're at the maximum amount for quite allowed by law, which is like a three percent of the, of the gross salvage. Uh, it also gives them the right of ways to be able to put up lines, which is what they've done. Uh, and, uh, a lot of other technical stuff that goes inside of it. This is the same, similar to the same agreement that we had with, um, Century Link. Uh, so our attorneys look at, the attorneys have looked over and it's the, it's pretty much the same, uh, agreement. Uh, is there any questions about this, uh, franchise agreement between the city of Aliceville and Bright Street Communications? It does have a period of thirty day window, I believe, of which they have to approve it or accept it or deny. Um, we've already been in communication with them, and they, they said that they're in agreement with what we did. We did change over a couple of things with dealing with cutting branches and make sure they pick up the branches that they could. And, uh, and some of those things, but what they did, uh, we did have some problems with that. Uh, and before I signed this, I'm gonna try to make sure that they get, um, a couple of other items that we requested done. Uh, mainly the potholders in the middle of town with the, that was cut out. Getting that raised up, so that way it's not a crater right there in the middle of town. But other than that, that's all I got, any questions? All right, that entertain a motion to approve the franchise agreement between Bright Speed and City of Aliceville. They moved a second, although the favor let it be.
It's ordinance.
It's an ordinance, so we gotta sit and wait.
Oh, y'all can suspend the rules.
All right, uh, this is an ordinance, so it would have to go, do we need to revoke the other ordinance from Century Link?
Has it expired?
It didn't expire, they just got bought out.
Um, I would.
Okay, all right. Well, first, I'd like to make a motion to, to, uh, revoke the ordinance between the city of Aliceville and Bright and, uh, Century Link Communications. Councilman Lewis made a motion. Councilman Wilder second. Other, any questions? Not make a motion to approve the amending or the revoking of the franchise agreement between the city of Aliceville and Century Link Communications. Although the favor let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. Most carries. Now, item number one, uh, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we can accept the franchise agreement between the city of Aliceville and Bright Speed Communications. So, it's been moved a second to suspend the rules so we can vote for the ordinance on the franchise agreement between the city of Aliceville and Bright Speed. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. And the most carries. Now we'll make a motion, I entertain a motion to approve the franchise agreement between the city of Aliceville and Bright Speed Communications. Been moved and, there's a, has been moved a second to accept the franchise agreement between Aliceville and Bright Speed Communications. All those in favor of accepting that motion of the ordinance between Bright Speed and the city of Aliceville franchise agreement? Please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. Most carries. The representative from Bright Speed said that they did want to do a ceremony. So as soon as I hear about ceremony, to proverbially start up the, the line, so that way we can receive this fast internet. Uh, I'm gonna try to let everybody know so we can be a part of it. Uh, so now we have two providers of internet in the city of Aliceville that can give you up to a gig in speed, which is the new norm now. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what, see how they work. So, I don't have to give, but I think I might give. And it might give us more competitive pricing, so that way we don't have to pay so much for a gig speed, uh, because there's two places in time to get it. Item number two, manufactured home placement between, uh, manufactured home placement on Miss Maddie Mayfield. We have a rec, we have a recommendation from the board to approve the manufactured home placement, um, by Miss, uh, Maddie Mayfield at the location of one twenty-five fifteenth street southwest Aliceville, Alabama. Is there any discussion about it? That's on fifteenth street? You know, we just, we just put speeds on it. Fifteenth street five, we just.
Yeah, we did.
Is there any, go ahead. It's been approved by the, it went through the process of sending out the letters. All the property owners agreed that they were planning, we're, uh, putting it out there. They went through the, through the private board, the zoning and planning board. The zoning and planning board made a recommendation, uh, that they could, uh, that it, that it meant qualifications and could be utilized. So now it's, it's in our hands, so. It's, it's a double wire.
Yes.
No, no single wires are allowed in city limits at all, unless they were predated from the ordinance. There's a, we got a motion and a second to approve the manufactured home placement of Miss Maddie Mayfield at one twenty-five fifteenth, uh, one twenty-five fifteenth street southwest Aliceville, Alabama. Is there any discussion? If not, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. And the most carries. Item number three, um, resolution honoring the Aliceville High School Yellow Jacket two A state champions four by one hundred relay. Uh, this resolution was presented, was retroactively being read because the Aliceville High School Athletic Association, I think, so that high school, high school athletic banquet was on last week. And school gets out this week. Uh, the resolution says, for the record, the city of Aliceville celebrates the winner of the state champions for the Aliceville Yellow Jackets two A boys state champions four by one hundred relay team and wish to honor them for their hard work, dedication, and athleticism. Whereas the Aliceville Yellow Jackets two A state champions four by one hundred relay team won the, won Friday on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. The A H S A A state championship four by one hundred relay in Coben, Alabama, claiming their first title by a score of forty-three seconds, forty-three point eight nine seconds. And whereas coach that coil fails and the entire coaching staff, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Aliceville High School were an integral part in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. And whereas the citizens of Aliceville and the fans of Aliceville, high, of Aliceville High School Athletics are proud champions, are proud of the accomplishments thus far of the Aliceville Yellow Jackets Boys two A state championship four by one hundred relay team. And whereas the city of Aliceville admires the Aliceville Yellow Jackets two A boys state championship team four by one hundred relay uh, for their teamwork, athleticism, grace in the sport of track and wishes to, and wish them well in their future endeavors. We do hereby congratulate the A H S two A state championship champions four by one hundred relay team and proclaim the date of, of May the sixteenth as Aliceville Yellow Jacket championship day. So, that being said, again, a congratulations to our, um, Yellow Jackets, um, our two A state champions four by one hundred relay team. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the four by one hundred relay team? Been motion, there's a, there's been motion, second by council, motion by Councilman Lewis, second by Councilwoman Ball. All those in favor to vote, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. Most carries. Item number four, uh, recognition of National Police Week. Whereas the city of Aliceville designates, you mentioned we could make the fourteen, make the twenties as National Police Week. And whereas the city of Aliceville expresses unwavering support for law enforcement officers across the United States in pursuit of the pres, the preserving, uh, safe and secure communities. And whereas the city of Aliceville recognizes the need to ensure that law enforcement officers have the equipment, the training, the resources that are necessary in order to protect the health and safety of officers while they protect the public. Whereas the city of Aliceville recognizes the law enforcement community for unseen acts of sacrifice and heroism. Whereas the city of Aliceville acknowledges that police officers and other law enforcement personnel, especially those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, should be remembered and honored. Whereas the city of Aliceville encourages the people of the city of Aliceville to observe National Police Week by honoring law enforcement personnel and promoting the awareness of the essential mission that law enforcement personnel undertake in the service of their communities adopted this day on twenty-fourth, May, two thousand and twenty-three. And although we should pass it on two council meetings ago, uh, I didn't know about it until later, but we still can do it retroactively and declare, uh, Police Week. Uh, we thank our police officers who are present as well as those who are not. And I ask that we take a moment of silence to recognize, uh, one of our own who was involved in the line of duty, uh, Officer Crusick. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as read? Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Not entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. And the most carries. Item number four, I'm sorry, item number five, resolution recognizing municipal clerk week. I don't know how a clerk let it, let us get this back, uh, without recognizing this as well. We gotta do it retroactive last week was, uh, municipal clerk week. The office of municipal clerk is a time honored and vital part of local government and exists across the world. Whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest amount of public servants. And whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing body, and the agencies of government at other levels. Whereas professionals of professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, and rendering of equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, the governing body does recognize that we could pay for the third, to May the sixth as professional municipal clerk week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk for the lot of services she provide and, or they provide, and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, adopted on twenty-fourth, May, uh, two thousand and three. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Then the motion on the floor by Councilman Lewis. Is there a, the council, the second by Councilwoman Ball. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent chair, ayes have. Most carries. All right, it's a lot of reading. Uh, item number six, request for qualification, R F Q. Um, we got two of them that we need to put out. On the first, uh, request for qualifications, we've, uh, been working, um, through various agencies to try to find funding sources for housing. Um, and one of the first steps is that we gotta, if we want to use federal funds or if we want to use, uh, uh, federal money, then we have to go through the federal process to make sure that the, uh, people that we select are done fairly and equitably. Uh, this first step would be to try to find someone that would draw design concepts, uh, for the actual placement, uh, and then work up cost figures. So that way, when we make presentations to banks and say, hey, this is something that we're interested in doing, they can see that we're serious when we come to the table. Uh, there's a number of people who have already, uh, reached out, so they said they're interested. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we do it in a way in which we did not have to go back through the request for qualification process. So if we do it this way, we're covered, uh, on all our bases, so to speak. So just in case if they say we want to go back and make sure that you did it, uh, fairly and equitably, then we're covered. Now again, this will just get people, they'll send us, just like with our road paving project, they'll send us packs and they'll show us, hey, this is the work that I've done in Evansville. This is the work I've done in Dallas, this is the work I've done in Tuscaloosa. And then as a council, we would decide who would be the best person to move forward with, uh, if we, uh, made that type of presentation to a bank. Now again, this is not saying that we're gonna get the housing tomorrow. This is just putting us in the position, so that way when the opportunity presents itself, we'll be able to have a legitimate architect, engineer firm, or whatever it is that we have to utilize when we make the presentation to a bank or an investor. So that being said, um, it'll have to run in the paper for two weeks. And then after it runs in the paper, we'll get, uh, we'll get a scoring card, and we'll sit down and score it just like we did with all the rest of the, um, project that we have to do. If we have any question about it.
I don't have any questions about it. I, I think we had this conversation, I guess, what I live up two or three years ago. I think Mr. Edgar was here. And I, I know we want a housing complex, I know we want, you know, to be older and, and, but I, I think, I wouldn't want to come to a place that doesn't have, I mean, more store jobs. So, I mean, like I said last time when I talked to Mr. Edgar, I mean, it makes sense, you know, I guess making make sense. You know, uh, try to build up the industry, try to build up, you know, uh, things around where people would want. Because most of our children, when they graduate, they're leaving, you know, because of the less jobs. Uh, so, I mean, I think, I guess you're saying kind of putting a cart before the horse. You know, I think the first thing, and I, I mean, it's a good idea to have housing, but, uh, give me something here to make me want to stay here. You understand what I'm saying? Because if I don't have anything here to do, I'm not gonna come here. So, I mean, and I guess that's, that's gonna be like a collaborative thing with the industrial board, you know, and, uh, economic development. So it's, it's gonna be, I, I think, a team effort, but I, I think creating, creating an atmosphere where I would want to come, where I would want to live is, is like something that needs to be worked on. The whole, you know.
All right, um, just to, just to kind of give a, give a broader view. Um, the city of Aliceville has the most jobs in the whole county. The most, uh, out of the whole county, uh, in a five to twenty-five mile radius. Uh, because you don't just look at Aliceville, you look at the surrounding area. So you count the Draxville plant, you count Aliceville, the federal prison. You count Lavender, you count, uh, the schools. Uh, and when you look at that, we have a unique, I guess, a unique, a unique, uh, situation. A lot of the people who I work with, I can't speak with to everybody, but a lot of people who I work with and also, uh, a few people at, at Drax, uh, look at staying here, but there's nowhere for them to stay that's not, they weren't built in nineteen seventy, fill in the blank. Uh, and most younger people don't want to build because they don't want the responsibility, the home and taxes, the grass and all that type of stuff. Uh, they want to come into a place where all that is taken care of. So I know, and also, now that's just people who are, you know, in those two places. Uh, Frank Community Village, uh, I'm, it's income based. So there's a, there's a few people who stay there, and our housing list remains full, so this ain't gonna, this wouldn't affect anything. But there's, uh, there's some people who pay more for their rent than I pay for my mortgage on my house right now. They do that because that's the only place where they can stay in the city of Aliceville where this, where it's not an apartment. Latest apartment office you had built in nineteen seventy-six, something like, townhouse. So saying all that to say, I'm not saying that we need ten thousand units today, but the goal is to do it incrementally. So starting off with forty units. Uh, once you start out with those forty units, people fill up. You do it, you do a number of things. First, you're creating a housing, uh, market. And you're creating a place to where these people live, work, grow, play, all that good stuff. That's another tax base that increase the value of the land, so that gives us more funds on the tax. Then once people are living here, then they'll spend their money here. Now, the average income in Aliceville Now, the average income in Aliceville, um, for a house of four is somewhere between twenty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars maybe, and that's probably on the high. Uh, so they don't have a lot of, if you just do the housing, you don't have a lot of expendable income. But if somebody who has making, two people making fifty thousand dollars a year, they got a hundred thousand dollars, and now they live in an apartment. Then they're gonna spend money more so than somebody who has less disposable income. Uh, so, uh, job and industry has, you're right, it does have to go hand in hand, um. But we've had a lot of jobs come in, but nobody is staying in Aliceville. Every time we see one of white man drive by, I know it's a prison. Every time I see folk coming in from Drax, they come in here from other places, very few of them work in Aliceville. And then you got a lot of people in Aliceville who would stay in a better place if they could, but they really, it's a lot of house on the market now, but it, it eons and flows. So saying all that, you're absolutely right, we gotta work on industry, and improvement of industries and, and that. But once you get the industry, we don't need to wait until we get the insurance and say, okay, well now we need to build a house. We need to work on them simultaneously, uh, which is happening, but you can't wait until you get it, because then we wind up, it'll happen at the prison. They built the prison. Uh, well, let me, let me take that back. The prison, uh, wasn't, wasn't built. They built Aliceville Estates. The prison development was delayed, and in order to recoup their money, they just changed it over to federal housing and made it to where you had to be income based. And now people who work at the prison can't stay out there, but they would. So, I mean, it's kind of, you, you work, you gotta work both ends of it. If we could swallow magic pills and bring industries, and I guess I would, but, uh, but we wanna make sure that we at least put ourselves in a place of it, and if, because if we don't, then we'll never, that's a hell, totally hard.
So what happens, what happens? What happens if we do build? What happens if we do build? And just like, we all know, uh, just like with the hopes of the prison, that it was gonna break this in, it was gonna break that in, it was gonna do all of this. And basically, I mean, you're just trying to steal. It might be different, somebody else may see different, just, I'm just one person. Somebody else may see, you know, different, but I don't feel, I mean, it benefited us as much as it could have, or as, as much as, I don't think we've gotten much out of it that we should have. And, and I'm just afraid, I'm just afraid that if we go out on a limb and then do this, then we're basically gonna be stuck with no productivity in, in which, I mean, we, I think I was teaching when the prison came in, and it was high hopes of what it can do for Aliceville. I mean, and, I don't, I mean, I don't see.
Well, the good, the good, the good thing about housing is you always have a need for housing. There's, there's never not enough, there's never, uh, too little housing. Um, so, um, even worst case scenario, you turn it over back to, uh, subsidized housing, and then we utilize it for, for, for increased, um, platform or subsidized out at the worst case scenario. Because they still, out of the state, they still supposed to handle. So if we utilize for housing, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna show us, or not show us, but that's gonna put us in a place where at least people can live here. And then if they decide to spend money here, that's fine, but now they can't live here. So the best that we get out of is maybe a tank of gas and a subway cell. You know what I'm saying? So I agree with you that we haven't cashed in on, or, or Christmas chicken, or jacks, or whatever, I ain't, I ain't putting nobody, I'm just, just saying. They get a, they get a meal from this birthday plate, and then they drive on back to Tuscaloosa. And then they live in their apartment in Tuscaloosa, they live in their apartment in Norfolk, and, and, or they live in their apartment in Columbus. And we ain't getting none out of them. But I know there's, there's a, a solid number, and I would, I would be willing to, if I was a betting person, I would bet my paycheck that there's, uh, at least thirty to forty people right now between folks who transfer back and forth, because you got a lot of people that work at the plants and which kind of place, that, uh, Mercedes and, uh, wherever all them places are, that live with their mom or dad, or in a older house that they don't wanna be in. But they would pay seven, eight hundred dollars for rent if it was a nice place where they feel safe and comfortable and go, uh, and they can go back and forth to work, because they wanna live in Aliceville. But if they don't have nowhere to stay, they gonna keep moving away to, to the other places that I'm not gonna miss. Uh, so, actually, I, I, it's, it's a balance, but if, if we don't do anything, and the money that we will use, uh, there's federal dollars that are out there to where we won't be quote, on the hook for the month. The money is simply, uh, is federal money that's used specifically for housing. And the Biden Harris administration has pushed a lot of federal monies down, uh, and tried to emphasize stuff, especially on rural fair housing. And so, uh, just like the next item that we got here, I'm talking about, but, uh, this just gets us in the game. Now, this, that, this don't build a housing, this don't get, this don't do anything except for receive packets, get a concept of what it, what it, what it would cost to get a design concept done. And then that way, if when we went to these people, or the grant came out, we could have something presented to them versus, well, let me get something together. So it's just kind of really just putting us in, in position that, that probably should have happened before we was on, before we was on the council. Or right now, in our, this administration, but for whatever reason, but we gotta try some, so.
Well, since, since two thousand, since two thousand, Calmere Coats, in two thousand, and everything's for a duck off the map, the Calmere did not have our H M. We had been on thirty-nine, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. They, they had three ships going at one time, Calmere came in, we go, we do book chores and everything, they're off the Calmere, y'all know we did. Like, and when it shut down, we had, we don't have any houses that we have torn down, since the Calmere closed and cleaned up on the land. Over a hundred some, they had these wrecked motherfuckers, says I've been in office, I know I'm gonna be here three times. About three times, just tearing that house, cleaning it up, it was a hundred some houses we tore down. And spazzing out, all over the road everywhere, you know. But when you start probably at three hundred houses, if we don't throw down, but replacement houses in those same lots, you're about to, they maybe twenty. In those same spot, they growed up now. The houses wearing, people staying in them. People staying in them, but it hurts, but in that, if we need somebody like, something like the Calmere, that we're gonna free ship with no H M, and they put people to work and paying good money, we had it. We lost it, you know, just cut down two thousand, we couldn't get it back. Oh, to move forward, but industrial, yes, housing, yes.
So actually, I don't want nobody to feel like we voting on, we finna bring an apartment complex on ours, that's, that's not it. This is just the first step to get plans, or get a firm to send us, hey, we're the best firm, you should choose us. And then once we choose that firm, then we tell them, hey, this is the design concept, this is what we wanted, so we're not making, and if, this is the first step in the federal process in order to be able to go after those dollars. Because if we don't do it, we're not gonna be able to go after those dollars. And then we just gonna have to keep, because waiting on the, I'm being honest with you, waiting on the investor to come in and invest in Aliceville, it ain't gonna happen. So I'm just, I'm not, I know that's improper, it isn't going to happen, uh. The people wanna see that you got, that you wanna bet on yourself, and we don't have a lot of people that's willing to bet on Aliceville. We got a lot of people who willing to talk, but there have been very few who have been put in, or nobody actually, who put some dollar signs out there. So if you know some millionaire, or suppose, some people with some good credit, they wanna donate to the city, or build, or not donate to the city, but wanna, uh, build, uh, uh, donate is fine, I'll take donations, I'll take donations, but, uh, or if they wanna invest in the city, that's, that's the word used, invest in the city, then we'll, we, we got some things that we can do some public-private partnerships with the, uh, uh, we can do some public-private partnership, but if we don't look for some federal money and try to find something, this money, this money that's out there is gonna float on out and we're gonna, we may miss out on our other opportunities. So I just wanna put us in a position, actually, there ain't no guarantee that it's gonna, it's just a, a starting process.
Yes, I would say on this money you're talking about, is it gonna be only for apartment buildings, or is it gonna be for companies, or is it gonna be for like family homes, or just for apartment buildings?
So once, once we, uh, get a firm selected, then we'll go into the details about the thing. So it's not, it's not been?
I know it hasn't been, I'm just asking, is it gonna be like that versus, is it gonna be only apartment buildings, uh?
We don't know yet, that's why I said, I don't wanna say and tell you it's gonna be garden homes, and then it turn around to be colonial homes. Or it's gonna be apartment complexes in this garden, in this home. So we, we just want housing with a quotation mark on it, and above it, and then as we get closer to it, they can give us different concepts. And we maybe do a public hearing and say, hey, which one, which housing would people be more interested in in the city? And that'd be the time for we'd get public input. Great question, thank you. So that being said, that doesn't require a vote to go out, but I did wanna get it discussed, so that way we knew what was going out there. The second thing on RFQs that are going out is the, is a grant rider for the affordable housing, uh, affordable housing grant, uh, slash, uh, housing inspector. So there's a grant, a federal grant that allows for, uh, funds to be used for roof repairs, for existing homes, uh, also bathroom renovations, um, a lot of this has been done in other counties, but once I find out about it, I won't, I don't care about what everybody else, I'll have to get a little piece of it. Uh, I think this would be one of the, a good thing, especially for maybe our senior citizens or, uh, uh, citizens with disabilities. Um, but first step is trying to get a, um, is getting a grant ride for, I am, I, we do have to put RFQ out for it, so I wanna make sure we, um, we do that. Uh, once I, the grant cycle ends July the twenty-fourth, so we got a little time to do it, but I wanna go ahead and get it on the agenda now before we, uh, wait till the last minute to, to get it put out. Uh, we already have a house, they said you have to do a housing inspector, but we already have a housing inspector. So I don't think we gotta put RFQ out for a housing inspector, but I just got it on our agenda just in case, so that way we'll have both for, both covered, just in case. Is there any questions about it?
Were there specific, um, bracket, meaning?
I have no idea, no idea, I don't know if it's, uh, if it's based on the income, or if it's based on, uh, senior citizen status, or it's based on first call, first answer, I don't know, but once we get, yeah, I would, my, my label. Uh, but I don't know if it's based on, uh, what it's based on, but that's my, we got, we just started out, we'll see. And the guy who, uh, who wrote about it, uh, he'll, he got us through it. Any questions about that? And we will put it out to the, to the general public, um, once we get that in. Uh, item number seven, surplus garbage truck. Uh, we have, uh, two thousand and nine or ten, uh, twenty unit garbage truck we purchased from Gray County, uh, Alabama. The, we purchased it back when we didn't have a vehicle, they have a garbage, a sanitation vehicle, a truck. Uh, and we were in a tight, so they let us use it, test it out, and then we went on and bought it, because that's what we, that's, that's all the thing that we had. Uh, currently, we're not using it because it's not as user-friendly, and it does not pick up, uh, it does not pick up dumpsters, um, because it doesn't have the attachment to be able to do that, uh, whether it on it or, or added to it. So that being said, um, it served, it served to be used, it's still in running condition, still, uh, condition, and still could be ran today. Uh, it does not have air conditioning, it does not have, uh, has limited heat in it, I believe. So we were using it just because that's what we needed to use, but, um, at this point in time, we just paying insurance on it, and we're not utilizing it like we were going, like we had plans to, uh. The goal, we have another sanitation unit, um, just our old garbage truck. The compactor, uh, had a itch, has an issue with it, and so the idea is that to surplus this unit, um, on the garbage truck, and then whatever proceeds that we get from it, utilize it to fix the, uh, backup truck. And then that way, we got two running trucks that we can swap in and out and utilize them, uh, interchangeably, uh, more often. Or you can rent two trucks when it's hot outside and get, get the guys out from, from in the heat, um, at the heat that they pick up trash. So that being said, um, there any discussion about this? The way we, the way we do surplus is just for drive people, if we send it to Southeast Auto Auction, and anybody in the world can be it on. So, um, they done a good job with our equipment in the past, and hopefully we'll continue to do that in the future. I can't tell most of the surplus, item number, well, item number seven, surplus garbage truck. Is there a second? Second. The motion is second, all those in favor let it be known by saying aye? Any opposed, the pen and chair, the ayes and, motion carries. Item number eight, garbage rates. Um, I know everybody saw it in the paper last week, but city of Aliceville is, uh, subject to air waste and their increase in garbage rates as well. They've taken our garbage rate from approximately fifty-five dollars per ton to seventy dollars per ton, uh. Um, we spoke to them and asked them about negotiating the rate, uh, a group rate for all cities, because we pay our bills on time. Uh, we pay our, our, our funds faithfully, and we understand the price of business has gone up. Uh, we understand the price of business has gone up, but, um, not by seventy dollars, uh, not to seventy dollars below. What that means for the city of Aliceville in dollars and cents is an additional three thousand dollar bill every month. Um, so, what have we done? We've reached out to, uh, Black Warrior, that don't want us. We reached out to Arrowhead out of not Selma, you, at you here time? They would take us, but it's an hour, thirty minutes of slow drive on the truck every day. Not, we just, uh, we, we have another one in Mississippi that we waiting on to see if they'll accept us. Uh, they're a little closest, about a forty-five minute drive, uh, but we are seeking out other options. If we do not have a resolution, then our last option is that we might have to increase our garbage rate because of the increase that's being imposed on us. It's not, um, our last garbage rate increase was in two thousand and seven. Last garbage increase rate that we had was in two thousand and seven. It was increased by a dollar and fifty cents. Your current garbage rate is eleven dollars and fifty cents. That's the current rate. The current residence, the current commercial rate is, I think, twenty... The commerc, the commercial rate went up, uh, from, went up by three dollars then, so it was up to twenty-four dollars, I think. So we're carefully considering what we need to do. If we don't find another place to, to take our trash out, then we will have to pass those costs on to the cities, to the citizens of Aliceville. Uh, and we're trying to make it as, as, as least as possible, but y'all don't wanna keep y'all trash in your house no longer, then we won't. Y'all don't wanna keep y'all trash in your house no longer, then we wanna keep it either, and we gotta take it to somewhere to get it though. So uh it's a fluid situation, I would say all the local mayors are working together, uh and mayors and councils are working together. And trying to do what we can, we talked to our county commission, our county commission was kind of uh. They handcuffed because air waste is, you know, who they leased out to, so if air waste go up on the price, we don't have nobody that can. Rent it on our own as far as the county.
About two thousand people that are not paying their garbage bill.
Right.
And we, you know, we tried to negotiate with Pickens County Water Department on the deal. So we looking at other other option maybe with the um tag place where you can put it on to their tag, so we're looking at other options. But unfortunately, because of those that are not paying their garbage bill, is the reason that you all are feeling this this way.
Right, so it's not because of A, and I do wanna make clear, Aliceville is paying their bills. But it's because of people outside that's that's not uh in the in the county. Uh that's not, and just try to, and they gotta make their money, I understand, but you can't make it off the back of. The citizens of Aliceville, I ain't gonna have it, so um I wish I could pick the trash up and dump it off. Somewhere to make my own landfill, that has been taught to that, but that costs millions of dollars long term. Uh to do your own uh landfill, uh if not hundreds of thousands, so. That being said, I know it's not bright news, but I wanted to make sure to let everybody know that that is it, uh the last, the last item on number nine, I. On the thirtieth of this month at. Well, I let I let chief uh chief announce it then, uh we got a special event that we wanna uh that we're gonna be doing for the citizens of Aliceville. So is there any question about garbage rate, any other discussion about garbage?
At at one time, I was in county, wasn't they all the water, I mean the garbage was still the same deal or separate now?
Um it's separate now, um it's not that I know of, I mean, my was before my time, but it's separate now, and the problem is that we got people that's not. That don't wanna pay their water bill, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, the garbage bill, so you're seeing garbage on side of the road. You know, we had cleaned up, but but that's what we're dealing with, these two thousand plus people that don't wanna pay their garbage bill, like I said, you know. We tried to work with the Pickens County Water Department and see if we can put something together to where the water bill and the ga- and the garbage will be will be together. So our next option, we talked to Judge Payton, try to see if we can collaborate there to put it where the tags. Where, you know, in order to get your tags, you have to pay the garbage bill, so we're we're trying to look at options and we know that the the cost went up, you know, but unfortunately. You know, it is what it is, and in in the meeting, you know, when Mayor Willnum hang. He's welcome to reach out to other resources, I think it was told to him that he can reach out to other resources, so you know, not just stay with air waste. But that's just where we at now with people that's not paying their garbage bill, but we are looking at other options.
That's a question, I just gotta get a little clarity, cuz I was concerned, uh cuz we have what I own on the on on the board. And I asked specifically, why can't we, why couldn't we add uh that on the. On the water board for the county, uh but they have a. Indemnity bond, they have an indemnity bond with the bank, and they are not allowed to add anything extra. On their bills that's not already on, that wasn't already on at the time, so uh that being, that being said, if they did. Uh they could be called on the note and they wouldn't be able to pay it, so uh it's unfortunate, but. Cuz I, cuz I in, I inquired and tried to find out why, and let them know, uh. I don't know if there's some workaround, and I and I had to probably look at my first match, but uh anything is better than than nothing. That's that's a that's a large deal, that's a lot, that being said, any other questions about garbage, alright? Moving on to item to uh Council Board, Council Board, you had opportunity to look at your bills, or any question about the bills as presented. They're not, I intend to most approve the meeting, the bills as presented. The rule is second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. I will stick around for a little while, if my time ends and y'all took up a lot of time. Oh yeah, real real quick, uh tomorrow, if we weather permitted, we will be testing outside rain that noon tomorrow. It 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 hasn't, uh we haven't tested it in a while, so tomorrow noon, so we don't want to put the alarm, we'll be testing that. That alarm at twelve noon tomorrow, listen, real quick, I want want everybody to uh hear what I'm about to say, uh. Lately, when I say lately, I say about last year, so since we lost the hospital. Uh our ambulance service, they've been doing a phenomenal job, uh but but the mayor spoke on it a while back, different ones. We need to speak out to our legislators again, reference to our hospital, because in Iowa, line of work. The response time lately on our medical units is anywhere now. No reflection or I I stay true, but it's now an hour or two hours away. Meaning they're coming from Tuscaloosa, North Port, or Columbus, so I say that, say. I'm asking the community if you were were bear with us, lots of us as law enforcement and first responders, while we doing our job. A lot of people say to us now, put them in your truck, take them to the hospital, we can't do that. Liability purposes, we can't do it, so please, ma'am, please, sir, bear with us, uh because we are limited. Uh with our training, uh and our certification on what we can, we can't do. The reason I say it, you know, when you speak out to our legislators about getting something back at our hospital. Because if our ambulance services continue to go into, you know, they they hit me on this one, continue to run into. From Pickens County, south of Aliceville, or south of Everville. The Columbus, Tuscaloosa, North Port, that's gonna be wear and tear and that's gonna be expenditure, so. That's gonna, eventually, uh we see it, it's probably gonna be a decline, a lot of different. Cities, counties are losing their ambulance service, we don't need that, we don't need that, so we need, we we need our. Our ambulance service. So so please, please, just bear with us, uh we we're gonna do all we can when we do uh get to you. All your medical calls, we we're gonna do our part, and for our training. On the police side and first responder side, uh the the thirtieth, which is next Tuesday, next Tuesday. We be having a here at City Hall at six o'clock, from six to seven, six to seven. It is a firearms safety information. Uh that's that's next Tuesday from six to seven, May thirty, if you have any questions. In reference to your gun that you purchased and it's still in the box, it's been in the box for ever since you bought it. Uh we gonna, we gonna give you some 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 safety tips, now, the requirement on that is, please, ma'am, please, sir, leave it in your car. Leave it in your car, officer come out, but if you have any any type of information, I think the first twenty, first twenty people. Uh that's come will give you a uh safety lock, you know, where, you know. Kind of help you out, and we gonna, we gonna make sure that we do this, but if you have any information, even in reference to the new gun laws. We gonna, we gonna be there to provide you with any information uh that we can, also we'll have your applications. For you one that still desire uh purchase your pistol permit, I I just purchased mine, I I'll say that on the record. Make sure you print that, that I did just purchase mine again, uh like a week to go. Uh that information, that application will be here, you can fill it out, you have to be the one to take it to the sheriff's department, because as I said. I don't have a problem with uh new new gun laws, I have a problem with a person that's not deemed competent. Uh to be able to carry a gun, so all that information will be provided again here, that's next Thursday here at. Uh City Hall from six to seven at Auditorium, we have information, again, if you have weapons that you don't know anything about, that you just purchased. Please, ma'am, please, sir, uh bring your gun and leave them, leave me there.
I have, I have a question, you mentioned about uh that we need to talk to our legislators about the hospital, okay? My question is, number one, who are the stakeholders? And and these stakeholders, it should be um. Mandatory, I say, that they talk to us, I mean. It is affecting us, it's affecting the community, so these people that are in the seat to. Say yea or nay, they oughta, they oughta come and say, you know, hey, I mean, you ought. I mean, you ought to be so that we can ask them, what's the problem, I mean, why are you not going, why are you being in that position that you're in? To uh with the key to unlock or not, I mean, you should. Come to the public, to the people and say, you know, what this is what's going on, if you can't handle your job, then. Let somebody else do it, because I mean, you got four, four cities that. I mean, and I know, I know for a fact, I mean, my husband, I had, I mean, uh. Patient of two heart attacks and strokes, and and I mean. To to get into Columbus or Tuscaloosa, you know, it it's just, it's just ridiculous, you know, and and I mean. They need to be required to answer some questions, not only to, they need to answer some questions to the citizens. Of Pickens County, so.
Did you have another question for him, put your man up, he want with me. Alright, so uh did you have? This wild, you go, I'm gonna ask you a question now.
Yeah, but my question was, did I kill for you, oh, this is your hands on, it's part time, we hear about the ambulance service, sponsor. Uh the the time we get it, what's for you, being out in out in the community and law enforcement and things like, were you? Here about the hospital?
From from our sector, from from uh law enforcement and first front, we not hearing anybody. So uh so the, ask, ask me a question, uh. We've been fighting, we've been, right, right, exactly, so we've been fighting this, this has been a long, but it's kind of, it's very tiring and 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 very disheartening. Uh before we got in, we've been fighting this since COVID, you know what I'm saying, really hit, and even before, uh. Hospital phone twenty twenty, everybody knows the story, if you don't, keep with me, I can I can attempt to, long story short, the hospital is controlled by a board. The board is not under commission control, uh they're independent board. And they can operate independently, the chairman of that board is Mr. The uh Sean McDaniel. And I'll give you his number if you ask me after, and I'm gonna give it to him on camera, but I give it to you personally, if you want, but that being said, uh. Uh that being said, they are the responsible parties of the hospital. Uh there's funds that come and go to them, but they responsible, now as far as the legislation and what's happening now, uh there is some funding. That's trying to be pushed through for a mental health facility at the hospital. That has already, that's been, that's been put in uh legislation, that's been introduced by our representatives. Uh or actually, I think it might even been a part of Governor Ivey's uh budget. Uh it has not officially passed both the House and the Senate on the legislative bodies. Uh once it passes, then we, that's phase one, that's step one, to get mental health facility to actually have the hospital opening and running. Then the other side of that is, the second phase is to try to get the emergency room open. So that way you can at least address emergency calls, stabilize the person, and then ship them wherever that you need to ship. Uh that's the game, core game plan for the hospital, our hospital was never, uh on average, we utilized eight beds. From what I understand per month, which is not a lot of patients, when you got a fifty two bed or fifty six bed hospital. You can't pay the bills if you ain't got the eight people in the hospital, you don't want folks sick, but uh they average per month. About eight people in the hospital, uh so that being said, they did not pay for them to run the hospital. Perfectly artificial, uh on last week, I got opportunity to meet with Ms. Shakita. Shakita Brooks LaShure, she's the director of the. Uh or the administrator of CMS, and that's that's the office that sets all the standards for hospitals and boards, and she was in Birmingham. And I took the met with her, meet with her and express the concern that we had with uh her name was again Shakita Brooks LaShure. Uh she was there, uh the EMA director, Ms. uh LaKita Bell, she attend, she was in attendance as well. And uh Hill County uh Administrator, Miss Chair, she was there as well. Uh and it was a sit down round table, opportunity to to talk to them and tell them the plight of Pickens County, while they can't do. They can't do funding stuff, they can't give us um potentially more resources, so that way when the hospital opens. We'll be able to continue to move uh and operate, so that being said, there's always. Uh from the Aliceville side, and from I will say on the on the Feustel Bell side, there's always room to work in the county commission.
So last week, you all talked about the legislature, last week we had ACCA Day, a county day, where in all the commissions, we met with Senator Allen. We stressed very, very much about how we need our hospital and and as um to piggyback off the mayor, he did, you know, talked about the mental health facility. Once you get that in place and it's it's in the works of funding for the hospital, but it's gonna start as a mental health facility. And once they get up and running, maybe six months to a year, you're coming on down, and then you have the health department, but that's the plan, but we did. Senator uh Allen did sit down and talk with all of us, you know, um me and my other colleagues, and like we said, we stressed really bad how much we need our hospital. We even um talked to him about the um the ambulance service that we have, what other options do we have, do we find other options because our ambulance service is stressed out? I know that for a fact, because when I lost my mom on March the sixteenth. I arrived on the scene doing CPR, my daughter arrived on the scene do- doing CPR, my other daughter come from reform. And passed two ambulances and beat them to the scene during CPR, so and we had a fire department that wasn't even two to three. Wasn't even a mile away from us, that did not have the devices or is functioning as a fire department to either do what was needed. So I understand that we need a medical center here, we need ambulance service here, but then you have to look at, you know, we can even try to tap into the. Sister cities that's close to us, if you're down on the end, if you're near Green County, call it nine one one number for Green County, they have new ambulance service. Their time is is good too, so we just gotta look around and see where can we pick it back on to to help us out until we can get things in place.
Hate to keep on going, going, but um you remember when we just had the election? Um I don't remember her name, the lady that that was coming and that was saying that she was talking about the hospital. Um about she would do some stuff to kind of.
Lisa, was it Lisa Moore?
Yeah, but I know she did a lot of talk about what she was gonna do, anybody heard from her.
So she didn't get in office, that Gerald, that's a B, that's a B Gerald, um she does some behind the scene work, but she limited, I get what she could do, cuz she's not in the legislature. She ran against uh Gerald Allen, uh for for that, so, uh. Like I said, she's a resource, but she ain't got the dues that Gerald had. Chief, you got anything else? Last thing, uh our ambulance base is private on.
And we got?
So so they can say.
So, so they can say, hopefully, pray that they don't go, they can say bye-bye P D camp. You know, but it is something that, that we're seeing on, in our sector, and even on a big community that they know. That we're gonna do our part, uh, as our training, or as far as our training will allow. To do, and the, uh, Chief John can, uh, say the same, because, uh, if we go beyond our sector, then. They will sue us personally. So, we're gonna do our part.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, on the street department, got a couple things. Uh, we did get our speed record down on Fifteenth Street. So we put two down on Fifteenth Street. That was one of the. Uh, funding gun, I like to call it streets, so live, if you hit it, then you gonna get a few bucks. Also, our residents should be, uh, should have noticed those. Um, we all, we had a request by Councilmember, uh, Wilkton, not Wilkton, Councilman Wilder at the, uh, at the previous council meeting. Uh, to look at, uh, potentially going to Jack, the Jack's Restaurant area. Uh, at a, at a potential blind spot on the trees, uh, covered out. And so after we talked to the corporate offices, uh, and secured, uh, permission from them. We, uh, we were able to conclude that project, uh, as well. Um, that's also on my street department, if you're, know someone who's interested in summer health. Uh, we are gonna do some summer health this, this year. We did not have any high school that, that, uh, that put in for it, so now it's, it's open game for anybody. But there's been a number of people said they expressed interest, so we waiting to get those applications back. And then once we do, we will do some, uh, we will do some summer help, um, on our, uh, street sanitation part. Fire department.
This month, uh, resulted in twenty-two calls. Uh, we have one structured fire, uh, that this month, that structured fire was the Memphis, Memphis, Tennessee fire department. Consisted in heavy containing a fire. Um, they did lose a bunch of equipment, lost some trucks, so we're not, um. Uh, some cities have donated some equipment, uh, other fire department has donated some equipment, uh, I think Arndale and, uh, Katz. Uh, Solution has donated some trucks to get them back operational. Uh, we are still, the city of Aliceville, uh, Pickensville and Somerville is in a mutual aid agreement with them. Any house fires, arrest fires that they have, um, we will assist and helping them on that until they get back fully operational and everything. Um, we had two vehicle fires this month, we had one grass fire, uh, we have, we had two ten-fifties accidents. Uh, we had fourteen ambulance calls, um. They mentioned enough about ambulance calls or whatnot, um, every time an ambulance call go out, we also get, uh, Lifelight en route as well. Um, speaking of that, uh, my department will be, uh, in some training tomorrow with the Lucas device. We have already been in training as well with Lucas device when we first got it, uh, due to the nature of the hospital. Uh, but they will be in some more training with that device. Uh, the police department has that device and the fire department has that device. Uh, we did add some, um, AED light packs, uh, we did add those to our trucks, uh, police department, fire department. I think C Hall's gonna have one, police department's gonna have one, uh, library, all that, so, um. It, you, you can get online and look at this and see how to operate this, this equipment, um. The AED is self-explanatory. Once you pop it open, it's gonna give you everything you need to do. It's gonna tell you everything you need to do. Uh, just follow those directions and instructions and it, it should do what it needs to do, um. We have been, I've been in the fire department for eight years now, um, we've been on and off with the brush truck. Uh, the last four years I've been in, uh, we have, the brush truck has been down, um, I took office in December twenty-one. Uh, I talked with the mayor and, and the, uh, Ms. Danica, and I thought since that I will not be putting any more money into that brush truck. Um, I do now have a new truck and it is operational, it is in service as of today. Uh, that truck is sitting outside in front, um, I'm glad to have this, uh. We, uh, we spent, we've been down for a long time and it, it takes a, takes a strain off our two pumpers because when we go to arrest fires or anything like that. Uh, we always take our pumper, uh, we have to run hoses, uh, thirty, forty feet, forty yards out in the, out in the woods to. Put out a fire and that just, you know, that's a strain and then, especially with one guy on a truck to drag a hose that far and then have to, um. Yeah, put that hose back good, drain the water out of that hose, it, it, it's a drain, um. So, y'all welcome to the truck out front, um, that's ours. Any questions from the sports?
Of course. The last meeting we had, the meeting was about the fire hydrant?
Yes.
So, what are the updates on the fire?
Yes, uh, to let everybody know that I do have an inspection coming in, it's called ISO, um, Insurance Services Office. Um, like what they do, they come in and they, uh, make sure everything is in compliance. Uh, our trucks, our hoses, um, the hydrants, um, make sure that all our training is up, um, that, uh. Give you guys a better rate on house insurance. So that's what that's all about, and they will be here June twenty-eighth at one P M. Um, you probably have been seeing my Tahoe and other department trucks run around the city of Alabama trying to get things situated. Um, that is why, but they will be here June twenty-eighth at one o'clock, so.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Kate, what you got?
Um, I was just gonna say that we'd love to help y'all celebrate Ritespeed, um, if you have a date, if you have ribbon cutting, go inside with the celebration, um. And in July, we are going to schedule a ribbon cutting with Mark Watley, and once we get that date nailed down, I'll get with council and the mayor. I'll be in attendance, um, and then we have a free community movie that will be in July as well. We do not have a date set quite yet. But, um, it'll be on the Houseville Area Chamber Facebook page and I'll, um, send it to y'all to help spread the word via the City of Houseville page. That's for now, that's done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, museum report, oh, last weekend, we had the reenactment, I think everything went smoothly, um, the reenactment was good. Lotus Planks, John did a great job and, uh, kudos to John and, and those that planned the event. Uh, any other, any question about the museum? Alright, uh, anybody in the audience have anything to say today? Alright.
I do. So we, I already gave an update about the ACCA County meeting.
Yes.
Last week, we hosted, because we know May is Mental Health Month, and in partnership with the library, we hosted the Pickens County. Where's the Community Resource Health Fair, we have a good turnout on that. On June the twenty-first, in, in partnership with the Aliceville Library again, we will be hosting a job fair. It's for everybody's second chance, um, for everybody, because we want everybody to have the chance of coming out and getting a job. So we'll keep advertising that and keep pushing it.
Super, yeah, a flyer, that too. They got flyer, that too.
It's coming up, yeah. I'm working in, in partnership, I'm sorry, with the Tuscaloosa Career Center also, so it's Tuscaloosa Career Center, Aliceville, Public Library, and the community.
So, once you get the, the shoot it out like this, man, thank you for watching, bye, everybody. This may, this may.
Okay. I want to say good evening again to everybody, uh, on the, on my news thing. Let me get up. On the war situation, I have set some dates in next month that we will be carrying the war to Amory City as soon as I get in contact with their mayor. Also, those are more people in Amory. And, uh, the mayor said that they will carry the war for us to Amory. And on the Jackson situation, um, he said they would not take it to Jackson. But, uh, I got on around the bush, so we gonna, we gonna give it to Jackson one or the other, and because it was my first choice. But, um, sometime in June, we'll give it to them. I got some dates on my calendar to take the war to Amory City.
This man.
And, uh, I just want to thank everybody who contributed and who's still contributing, and like I said, it is success. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your diligence, uh. Let me know the dates, so we'll get it out there to you, and like I said, we'll take it to Amory. Uh, Jackson is just four hours away, so I, you know, I, I can't justify that, but I can justify Amory because it's a little closer. So, but we'll, we'll get it there, uh, and you got a rapid wish?
I got you.
Uh, council members, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Wilder.
Yes, uh, grand reunion this weekend, uh, Roger. Uh, if we looking at YouTube paper, uh, you see it, my page about parade Saturday morning. It's about parade Saturday, oh, seven o'clock Saturday, and it's on the front page of the, of the papers, so it has to be a front page. So there's about parade, can't talk. Next day after tonight, the meeting tonight was very, I learned a lot. By listening to other people, you know, representing, you know, getting some point of call that I did not know, but I learned a lot, and I thank y'all. The night meeting was, was real good.
It real though. Go ahead, go outside. I apologize. Go ahead, Ms. uh, Ball, Councilman Ball.
Okay, I don't know whether you're gonna kind of elaborate on it, uh, a little when you say something, but, um, down in, in my area. Seeing somebody nursing home and, um, seen some work going on at the trailer park. And, you know, Liam, uh, I turned around and, uh, went out there, two guys out there working, and so I asked, I inquired. Uh, what's going on, um, who are you? And, um, so I asked them, I think it was maybe the owner of it now. Um, and I asked him, you know, have they purchased the, the, there's the, the trailer, mobile home park. Have they, have they purchased it? I know, right? And, uh, he said they have, and they were out there, uh, doing some work, uh, and it looks, I mean. Just with what they have done out there, it looks a whole lot better. And, uh, today I seen they was out there putting, um, some stuff in it, in the, in the hose, in the pothole, so. Um, I'm, I'm grateful for that, I'm grateful for the cleanup, and he, he, uh, said that the city was supposed to come and help him. Do some, you know, pick some stuff.
We figured that when he called.
Yeah, so, um, so I told him, you know, whatever we can do to help, just let us know.
So, yeah, so that's, uh, she took a little bit of my thunder, but it's okay, it's alright. We got, I'm just glad we got it. So, is the, the nursing, the nursing, uh, not nursing home. The, uh, owner of the nursing home, uh, group has purchased, uh, that property. So, um, that, I didn't want to say too much of it before we got, um, before it got done, um. But the, the process did go through. We got some owners that actually care about the facilities. Uh, and they are going to do some work in trying to, uh, make it up to, up to code. Um, he has asked for some time, we had talked about that a little bit at our work session. And, uh, and we're gonna give him a little bit of time to get to where it goes. We're not gonna give him a long leash because we gave long leashes before. And we've been choked by them. So, we want to, uh, make sure that he gonna continue, uh, and that, and we know this is a long-term project. Uh, but I believe that he's the right owner for the job because he actually cares about Aliceville. Uh, because he has a business here, and if he increases the property value of that location, then he increases the property value of his own business. So he has invested interest in, uh, improving the property. So, um, thank God for that. That's out of our hair temporarily, uh, sir.
What about me?
With, uh, Cutch Lane? Yes, so they, so they parked their, Cutch Lane, their, their both came as a, as a package deal. So, uh, I haven't been on Cutch Lane yet, but I have been to, uh, the West Side, uh, Mobile Home Park, and it is getting improved. So, uh, as far as the Romeo, I'm not gonna address it, because I'm talking to the Apple, but there is new ownership. And that is, and that is, and he's, and he's doing something to, uh, for that people. And as far as, um, as far as vehicles, we just want to update the, the city and the council, we are still a little slow to, um, to our. Uh, brush pickups and, and jump pickup because our, uh, truck has been down. Uh, and it is now, we're still gonna continue to take up things as we can and load them our trailer second to the scale. Um, it's just gonna be at a slower pace. So, work with us, we, we don't want, we're not gonna have a junky city, we don't, we don't continue to take things up. It's just gonna be a little slower, uh, than normal. Once we find something that's affordable in our range, uh, in our price range. Then we are gonna, uh, then we are gonna go and, and do what we gotta do. Uh, we did price a new grapple truck, new grapple truck, it's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Unfortunately, we don't have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars sitting around, uh, nor do we want to afford the, like, the tree to shake, the tree, there's no tree to shake, obviously. Uh, but we are gonna find something, so we gotta, we gotta pick up, pick up brush, we gotta pick up stuff, um. I had something else that is meaningless, last long enough, so we're gonna, uh, end on that note and welcome, lastly, I want to welcome all the Aliceville. People, uh, back to the hive, to the grand reunion, uh, starting on Friday. At six o'clock, five o'clock, five o'clock, right? At six o'clock on Saturday, and we look forward to, uh, welcoming everybody back, and you spend a whole lot of money at Aliceville. Uh, I intend to most to adjourn. Move and sing, although the family, if you know about saying I.